Well, good morning, afternoon, and evening everyone, social media and everyone on the virtual platform. Good morning, evening, afternoon. I'm Pastor Teresa Vini, one of the administrators here at Soldiers on Fire for Christ, and your instructor for our Saturday night Bible study session. God bless you. Thank you for joining us. Thank you for those that will be reviewing the recording later, and those that are trying to come in. Amen. So God bless you. Thank you so much. I just wanted to first welcome you, but also welcome you for, we have a little bit of time. I will start class at seven. I wanted us to enter into just a praise and worship song to welcome the Lord. This is an entrance for Him. We always have to give Him respect. Welcome Him to His platform. Everything was made by Him, for Him. And I told Him I wanted to, you know, saturate Him with this song, "The Words of Power." I'd like the song. I tell you, it's just, we gotta give Him respect. Some of you are not giving Him respect. Those that will view this recording out here lately, social media, those that say that they love the Lord and children of the Lord, you don't respect Him. And He frowns upon that. He's been very upset and sad about that. Don't intentionally make the Lord cry and be sad, because you don't like when someone intentionally makes you cry or be sad. Amen. So again, God bless everyone that is coming in, those that will view the recording later. Right now, we're gonna enter, I'm gonna play a worship song. I want you to just clear your heart and your mind. I need you to be still, empty your mind out. See, that's important. See, when you empty your mind out, forget about the stuff that shows the Lord. He see, because He needs to see Himself in you. So for Him to see Himself and to know that you really love Him is when you can set aside all your weights. Set aside what you always thinking about, your stuff, your earth stuff. Set that aside right now. Set aside social media. Set aside phone calls. Tell everybody right now, you are about to sit in the presence of the Lord and fellowship with His children, so that you can hear what He says in and through us, so we can continue to help one another and to help ourselves. Amen. So this worship song hopefully will just help you to shut your flesh down, calm your nerves down out there, social media. Calm down. Don't get me started, because there's a lot going on, but I'll save that for the next word that I give soon on my personal platform. Amen. I do not own any rights to any musical audio that will be coming forth. I do not own any rights to any musical audio that will be coming forth. And again, I do not own any rights to any musical audio that will be coming forth. So that's one for the Father, one for the Son, and one for the Holy Spirit. Make that nice and clear and plain. Amen. So again, God bless y'all. Thank y'all for joining us here at Soldiers on Fire for Christ Saturday Night Bible Study Session. Amen. Yes, Lord. Sing it again. Give you all the glory. Give you all the glory. Say, "You are Alpha and Omega." We give you all, we give you all, we give you all. Excuse me, Pastor Teresa. Sister Tammy, she said, told me, let everybody know that her brother-in-law just had a stroke. So please keep him in your prayers, because she won't be making it to Bible study. Wish she would've texted me that, because it's on the recording. But yes, we will keep her in prayer. Amen. Thank you, Minister Rose. Social media out there, thank you for enjoying, hopefully, because now the presence of the Lord God is here. He's always here, but some of you don't welcome Him in. Some of you are not respecting Him. You're not respecting His presence. So He's pleased. He told me, "Thank you for respecting Him on His platform with us this evening." Amen. Amen. So let us pray, because He is here. Let us talk to Daddy and sit in His presence as I decrease, so He can increase. Oh, Heavenly Father, again, I come to you this time with my Soldiers on Fire for Christ family and social media family. Lord, God bless those that will view this recording and everyone under the sound of my voice. Lord God, then watch over our dear sister Tammy and her family. Lord God, you know all and see all, and you already know what's going to be done and what it's going to be done for, because all will work out for their good as long as they keep their eyes stayed on Thee in the name of Jesus. Continue to strengthen them, Lord God. Continue to help them to stay focused and not distracted, even in this time, a time of sorrow, a time of, you know, just confusion and a time of sadness, Lord God. But there's nothing to be sad about, I don't believe, because you know what you're doing in and through that family in the name of Jesus. And so, Lord God, bless everyone else on the platform tonight. Bless everyone again that will record this reviewing tonight. Lord, you know I've already decreased, and I continue to decrease, so that you can increase. And always let the words of my mouth and the meditations of my heart be acceptable in your sight, for you are My strength and My redeemer in the name of Jesus. And so, Lord God, continue to use and move mightily. Thank you, Lord, for sitting amongst us tonight. And we give you all the honor and all the glory, because you are always worthy to be praised. Have Your way, Holy Spirit, in this place amongst us, as iron sharpens iron, in Jesus mighty and awesome name. And everyone say, "Amen." Get out your devices or your Bibles. Amen. Again, thank you for social media purposes, those that are coming in, those that will be recording later. Again, welcome. This is Soldiers on Fire for Christ Saturday Night Bible Study. I am Pastor Teresa Vini, one of the administrators and your Bible instructor for tonight. Hallelujah. And for the past couple of weeks, me and the leadership team have been discussing the process of salvation, sanctification, justification, and glorification. The whole process is about building your relationship with God, period. But it's just been broken down. It's broken down. First step is salvation. You continue on. You move on to sanctification. Move on to justification, and in the end, it's glorification. And you put it all together. It's all about spiritual maturity and spiritual growth, just like when a woman raised, a woman has a baby. The baby come into the world as an infant. After time, they become one years old, and after time, they become two-year-old. Then they become three, four, and five. It's all a process to become the final manifestation of an adult in the natural, being able to, all natural, having all body parts and functions, functioning according to how the Lord originally put it in them before they was in their mother's womb, and once they got into the womb, and to make sure that they use whatever they have properly. So tonight, we're dealing in the spiritual, we're continuing on the spiritual process of all of us being, and in the end, wanna be what God originally created us to be, not what we have been journeyed and made decisions on earth, because this is not who we are, like truly. We're not. We, this is with the process of helping us to continue to grow, to be all what God created us to be. Amen. So again, my topic for tonight, the importance of glorification. Do you know why it is important? Amen. Some of you, if you really think about it, you don't know. Even those that have been with God, you, you've, so what on earth, that you've been in church all your life, and you know, you've heard scriptures, you've heard, you've learnt some scriptures and stuff like that, but some of you have not really taken the time for yourself, because you're leaning on whatever the pastors or the church is saying, organizations saying, and you're taking on the image, you're taking on the picture of what they show you, that they tell you what God is, instead of you seeking Him for yourself. Seek Him, and you'll find Him. He said it in His Word. You don't have to seek it through man. God leads us to the people that He is within. That's why He says in His will, "Never forsake the fellowship of those that are His children as well." Amen. So again, class topic is the importance of glorification. Do you really know why it's important? We're gonna home in on two scriptures. Go with me to 1 Corinthians, chapter 15, verses 51 through 57. Let me give you some time to get there, as you're getting there, so for social media purposes. Glorification, if some of you may not really know the definition or the meaning of it, glorification is the final step. Like I said, it's a process. It's a growth process. It's the final step in salvation, where believers are transformed and receive eternal life in the presence of God. I'm gonna say that again, because you can't get that all caught up and mixed up with justification and sanctification and salvation. No, you don't get to glorification. Is the final step in salvation, where believers are transformed. Because some of y'all believe, but you're not transformed. Some of you are not transforming every day. Because the Bible says that you have to renew, transform by the renewing of your mind, and guess what? That affects your actions and your lifestyle, because what a man think is, you know, what comes out of here, comes here, and it comes out in your actions. Some of y'all got a lot of stuff up in here, and you live out of here, because we can, your lifestyle, your household, the way you talk, the way you move, the way you walk, tells how you are. Can't hide it. Amen. But those of us that are children of God, glorification is the final step in salvation, where believers are transformed and receive eternal life in the presence of God. Right now, all of us have not gotten to glorification, because what it says, "Where believers are transformed and receive eternal life in the presence of God," meaning out of this body, we're in the presence of Him. We in the presence of Him now, by spirit and in truth. But to see His face, we gotta be out of these raggedy vessels. Amen. I'll make that clear, you know. So I don't want y'all be thinking, because you're a believer, that you glorified. Nope. Be glorified. Some of y'all do. Y'all be poof, poof. Amen. 1 Corinthians, chapter 15, verses 51 through 57. I'm gonna read it in the Amplified Version to get us through, because I just have an introduction I wanna read y'all about in reference to our scriptures, and then we're gonna open it up with some class discussions. And I'm gonna see where you at with your perspective of glorification, the importance of it. Do you really know why it is important? Amen. 1 Corinthians, chapter 15, verses 51 to 57, the Amplified Version says, "Listen very carefully. I tell you a mystery, a secret truth decreed by God, and previously hidden, but now revealed." We will, we will not all sleep in death, but we will all be completely changed, wondrously transformed in a moment, in the twinkling of an eye, at the sound of the last trumpet call. For a trumpet will sound, and the dead who believed in Christ will be raised imperishable, and we will be completely changed, wondrously transformed. For this perishable part of us must put on the imperishable nature, and this mortal part of us that is capable of dying must put on immorality, which is freedom from death. And when this perishable puts on the imperishable, and this mortal puts on immorality, then the scripture will be fulfilled, that says, "Death is swallowed up in victory, vanquished forever." Oh, death, where is your victory? Oh, death, where is your sting? But, I mean, so the sting of death is sin, and the power of sin, by which it brings death, is the law, last scripture. But thanks be to God, who gives us victory as conquerors through our Lord Jesus Christ. Go with me to 2 Timothy, chapter 4, verse 8. We'll be bouncing back from both of those scriptures. 2 Timothy, chapter 4, verses 8. Amen. You got it out the bud? I'm waiting. Amen. 2 Timothy, chapter 4, verse 8. The Amplified Version says, "In the future, there is reserved for me the victor's crown of righteousness, for being right with God and doing right, which the Lord, the righteous judge, will award to me on that great day, and not to me only, but also to all those who have loved and longed for and welcomed His appearing." God's Word always, let it always be, and it will always be, a blessing to the hearers and the doers. The importance of glorification. Do you really know why it's important? In 2 Timothy, family, God, uh-oh, there we go, technology. In 2 Timothy, God's role made sure that Paul spoke to the heart of the leader, not merely to the head. While the book contains practical instructions for the mind and challenging exhortation for the will, God delivers through Paul's pen's words that fly straight to the heart and the emotions of Timothy. And any leader can receive valuable encouragement from this letter. It calls leaders to lead out of their souls and their convictions, to stand for what is right, even when no one else does, to finish well, regardless of the moral failure of the world. God speaks very personally and mentors us to be His kind of leaders, good ones, not evil, great ones instead of miserable. Here's some points to ponder on. Number one, we are most effective when we lead in the area of our gifts. I'm gonna say that again. We are most effective when we lead in the areas of our gift. In social media, I said it again, because I'm saying it for you, because some of you try to lead people, trying to pretend, trying to act like other leaders, trying to sound like. That doesn't help. You're ineffective, especially if you're working, you know, you wanna help serve and pray for God's people, you're more effective. That's why God created us all different with the same gift, because the difference, and the differences can reach those that someone else couldn't reach. Amen. Like certain family members, like I won't, I won't win all my blood family, but one of you may. Amen. Second point, leaders and believers must consciously work to finish well. That's all. If you're a leader and a believer, that should be your number one focus. That should be the bull, that's all. That should be your number one target every time you wake up and take a breath and say, "Good morning, thank you, Lord," to finish well in every area of your life. You should be striving to finish well. Amen. And the third point is spiritual leaders who finish well will be rewarded richly. I'm gonna say it again. Spiritual leaders will be rewarded richly. It ain't, I didn't say nothing about no religion, fake, phony, and plastic, entertaining, flipping the right. The spiritual, because by, you gotta know Him by spirit and in truth. You can't know Him until you come by Jesus. He said it, "To get to the Father, gotta come to Me." So you can't be religious and wanna be, you know, trying to make deals and stuff, social media. Those that are truly spiritual striving to, you know, strive to have this word and try to live the word, and not saying you gotta be all crazy, kooky, spooky, but God sees His face in your heart, meaning He sees that in every decision you make in your life, you are keeping Him inclusive. You're gonna be rewarded richly. Amen, Minister Rose.
But you repeated it. That's all, be rewarded richly.
Yes. Amen. Yep. Spiritual leaders who finish well will be rewarded richly. Amen. So between those two scriptures, 1 Corinthians, chapter 15, y'all can have y'all finger or tab on it. Our first class, my first discussion question is this for you to think about. And let's see what the virtual classroom have to say, and hopefully, again, social media, the Lord. And I know it ain't no hopefully, prayerfully, but also that your, your spiritual ears are open, and that you will be willing to receive, and you will hear something, maybe not just for you. You might get something, a word of encouragement, or something on this platform that you could take to somebody else to help their problem, or to help their situation. And sometimes, it's not always a problem. You can just hear something to help, kind of push them along, to continue to be good, so that in the end, they will be rewarded richly. Amen. Out the bud?
Yes, Pastor Teresa. Is it possible we could read that in another version, please?
What's, which one?
But, well, it was all read together in one, you know what I mean?
One, I read them separately, but I wrote, read them in Amplified Version. Which one you wanna read in another version?
I'm gonna read it in the New Living Translation.
Which scripture?
Well, you first read 1 Corinthians, right?
Is that the one that you wanna read?
Yeah, 1 Corinthians.
A whole lot. Okay, put it in the New Living. Let's do it real quickly. So, and I was just reading it for time's sake, but yeah, go ahead. 1 Corinthians, chapter 15, verses 51 through 57. Read it in the New Living Translation for us.
Okay. I just, maybe it'd be a little easier in case somebody is not on here that normally uses that translation.
They don't have to use my translation. They, it's, it's so many out here, but it's the same word.
Make it a little easier to understand. It says in 1 Corinthians, I'm reading from the New Living Translation. It says 15, "But let me reveal to you the wonderful secret."
Uh-uh, hold up, hold up. I said, I said 1 Corinthians, chapter 15, verses 51 through 57.
Pardon me, it jumped, it jumped. I'm sorry. I thought that sounded weird. Okay, hold on one second. Okay, that's 15 through what now?
51 through 57.
That's what I was reading. 51 through 57, right?
Yes.
That's what I thought I was reading. 51, 1 Corinthians, 15.
Verse 51 through 57.
That's what I was reading.
Okay, hit us, hit us with it again. Out the bud?
All right, okay. It says, "But let me reveal to you a wonderful secret. We will not all die, but we will all be transformed. It will happen in a moment, in the blink of an eye. When the last trumpet is blown, for when the trumpet sounds, those who have died will be raised to live forever, and we who are living will also be transformed. For our live, our dying bodies must be transformed into bodies that will never die. Our mortal bodies must be transformed into immortal bodies. Then, when our dying bodies have been transformed into bodies that will never die, this scripture will be fulfilled." Amen. Death is swallowed up in victory. Thank you.
You're not finished. That's to 57.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me. "Oh, death, where is your victory? Oh, death, where is your sting? For the sting, for the sin, for sin, is the sting that results in death, and the law..." And the law gives sin and power. But thank be unto God, he gives us victory over sin and death through our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Praise the Lord. First question. How would you describe the way our culture thinks about and deals with death? Take a moment before you answer. How would you describe the way our culture thinks about and deals with death? You got your hand up. Go ahead, out the bud.
Well, a lot of people in the world, when you go around asking them about Christ and about their life and everything else, a lot of them think, well, we just have a party here and, you know, what, you know, tomorrow, we'll do better tomorrow, when tomorrow we don't have promise to it. But the word of God tells us to always be awake, be alert and be aware of your surroundings around you, because you don't know what could happen. And in Christ being in you, you will have the power to be able to overcome the things that are coming in the world. Because if you have God, you have everything in your life. But if you don't have God, you have an empty shell that's only imagining things according to, like fantasy, but the reality is death. There's once a man to die, and not after that is the judgment.
Amen. You can put your hand down. You know you got your hand up, right? Anyone else? How would you describe the way our culture thinks about and deals with death? Minister Isaiah?
Amen. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, yeah. Our culture, how we deal with, with death. Now, our culture is a lot of time, we just live life for the day and whatever happens, happen. You know, we, we don't think, we don't, our culture teaches us, you just live the day, you die tomorrow, the time of death come, you just dead and you gone. That's how our culture think these days. You know, a lot of times, they don't think about Christ and um, judgments and the things we may go through after death. They, they believe these coaches, the days the coaches taught, believe that what we did, we just did. There's no consequences or nothing afterwards. So that's the thinking that most of the culture we have today. Yes, it's just, you live, while you live, you did, it's just, it's just all over. That's the thought of the culture today.
Okay, yeah, okay. Apostle Robin, Minister Rose, in that order?
Um, I guess when I, uh, think about our culture, you know, when a person dies, you know, really, if you are, are saved and you know the Lord, you know that to be absent from the body is to be present with the Lord. So that's a time really that, you know, as a remnant, we're supposed to be rejoicing. You know, because that person is gonna go, you know, their soul is going to heaven. So, but a lot of times, you know, people are, are crying and, and, and they're mourning and, you know, that's the natural part of us, you know, because we live in this natural flesh suit of ours, you know, because a lot of times I think that we can be, be selfish, even though we know that, um, if that person is saved, they're, they're in heaven with the Lord, but we're still yet wanting them here with us because we're gonna miss them and having them here on earth with us. You know, but, you know, people say that they're gonna have a homegoing service, but a lot of times it turns into something different. You know, I feel, you know, than a homegoing service, because you got so many different emotions. You know, you got to save people there, you got to unsave people there, you know, but in all actuality, we are truly supposed to be rejoicing if that person is saved, you know, and if that person is not saved, we're supposed to say, Lord, have mercy on their soul. So that's kinda how I feel about it.
Amen. Before I get to you, Minister Rose, let me read what up, up, um, oh. Apostle Tybo put in the chat, he said, "What a great finishing goal. This is the crown of it all. This is the rest. This is the seal of everything, the seal of all the stage of the salvation that has come to us. Glorification tells of the sign and the seal of God's ownership. This is another way of saying, you're mine forever. We are fully owned. Amen. Absolutely." From justification to sanctification, then to glorification. In the Book of Acts of the Apostles, check, check the one, verse eight, Jesus did tell the believers to wait for the baptism of the Holy Ghost, which is the most important aspect of our faith. It is the sealing stage. Amen. When the Holy Ghost seals come upon the believers, glorification takes place. Amen. Glorification is resurrection, power, resurrection, spirit, resurrection, faith in the believer as evidence of God's perfection and finished work. Amen. And then he gives scripture, uh, and that was Apostle Robin giving us out scriptures, First Corinthians fifteen, uh, fifty-one to fifty-seven, Second Peter four through eight. Then he says glorification is not positioned to approve signs and wonders. Absolutely. It is not to approve or validate the speaking of tongues and prophecy, et cetera, but it is a proof of eternal life on the inside of the believer. Judas had justification. He had sanctification, but he never made it to the last stage, the glorification stage, the final stage. This is an awakening subject. Amen. Absolutely Apostle Tybo, because of the choices that Judas made that what counseled him out of glorification, because if he, all he had to do was repent. He didn't even know the power. He, he had Christ. It's like, and can I say it safely, God? Um, we, we know stuff, like sometimes we know, but then we don't know. Because see, you may know it by what you heard and you read, but you don't know it by based on your experience and the fruit that is within you. Because you, because trust me, what you know, it's gonna be put, it's gonna be put to the test in some form or fashion, whether it's with someone else, whether it's with yourself. Because, for example, our faith, okay, if you, if you're sick, if you believe God is a healer, you'll be tested. Is you're gonna speak that God healed your hand, or you want, you wanna take, try to take care of your hand yourself? So it's like, you know, like, yeah, I know he, he a healer. You know, my grandmother said, everybody saying, his word saying, but do you really believe? It has to be within. Amen. Minister Rose? Thank you.
Apostle Robin really said what I wanted to say of how the world, we, when, um, our culture think about, you know, dealing with death, we, they deal with it in a selfish way. Even when I, I, I say that, even when somebody's sick, we wants to hold them all, keep them here, we pray for them to stay when, you know, a lot of times that is God's will for them to move on and they be ready to move on.
Right.
But we, we, we in a selfish way, because we want, we gonna miss them. And then on the other hand, those, uh, there's so many people that I say in church, quote unquote, you know, in church, they think it's a, uh, I, uh, I'm not talking about those that are not saved and, and, you know, the one that believe in the whole step all the way, salvation, sanctification, justification, and glorification. Those that just go to church and in church. And they done read the story about, you know, going to heaven. They put everybody in heaven regardless of how they lived. I think, um, Minister Isaiah was speaking on that. And then I've seen where they, it's a big time for them to go party and call themselves drinking away their sorrows and all this kind of this stuff, but they don't think about, you know, getting their souls right, because one day, it may be them that somebody, you know, going to lay to rest. So that's how our culture look at it. We, we try to keep people here when it's their time. It has been spent here on this earth and, and, and then we look at it in a way that, hey, it's a big time to, to, to party and we wanna say we drowning our sorrows and and all this kind of stuff, but we gotta think about that, you know, that may be our, the, our name gonna be the next one called on the road, as they always say. You know, old folks talk my, they, the name was called up your own, he was called on the road. So it's time for them, they went on, they had to go on, but no, you gotta think about when that day is gonna come, how you done live and, you know, so forth, but a lot of times the, the culture, our culture don't look at it that way, if I explained it that.
So how can we, since y'all put it that way, this ain't even on my notes, Holy Spirit says, say this. How can we as leaders and believers, spiritual, I break that, because I'm gonna tell you out there, social media, and I'm putting on record, some of y'all religious folks is off the chain. And y'all up here confusing and tanning up people's spiritual growth. You making, you, you know, you messing up people. You, you is messing up your, your, your people that you're leading. You're not feeding them properly and the food of the word of God, you're not even having it cooked well done, meaning it's not even in yet. You just saying it because it sound good and you want some accolades for it. So that's stale food and, and, and God, please help those that are eating stale food from stale leaders and believers. Because they not growing. They're not growing at all. So the question would be based on that, since we see that our culture, sometimes when death come, everybody wanna holler, cry, jump in the coffin and all that, hoot and holler, tanner fifty-five rows. How can we as spiritual leaders demonstrate and show the importance of glorification if that person was saved? Because let's be real, us, our social media, virtual classroom, we are charging now. We're gonna put people in their categories, even family members. If they not saved, then the question would be, how can you or what would you show? How would, what? How could you approach or how would you show to them the importance? Whether they in hospitals or the importance of glorification. And if you don't know the importance of it, then that's the million dollar question on, okay, so where are you? What areas of the process do you need to go back and revisit? Amen. Because once you receive salvation, you should be growing. You should not be just stuck on salvation the first day that you got saved. Minister Rose?
Amen, um. We as believers need to, to let people know and that it's not just a myth about living right in order to go to heaven, because so many times leaders let you know that you can live any kind of way and you still can go to heaven.
We don't try to fall for the lassos, you mean?
Don't fall for the okie doke. That's what so many are doing, with, even with the grace movement today.
That's the bait of Satan. Don't fall for it.
Nothing but, but Satan. We gotta let them know that it is important and God meant what he said. When he said in his word of that, that, uh, the righteous shall not inherit the kingdom of heaven.
And then he gonna say, Lord, Lord.
Say depart from me. I know you not, you workers of. And I've seen it so many times. I, I think I've shared with y'all. I went to a, a, a funeral one time and these people, they was all up in the church shouting, singing, praying and, and preaching and everything else, and then they went to the repast and they start breaking out with the, even the pictures in the pulpit. The, the keg, uh, they had all the, 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 uh, the big old giant gallons of liquor and all so forth, and, and they was just getting, having a good good old celebration, as they wanna call it, so they, they celebrating the life of, of so-and-so and this and that and everything and stuff, but you know, how many y'all, uh, uh, thought about your soul maybe required of when you leave here? So we gotta make sure we let people know the importance of living right. The importance to lay aside every weight and every sin. Because you know, a lot of times, we know what happened when people get that happy juice in them, as some folks get to say, or that different, that spirit that's up in the spirit of God, they do all kinds of evil and unrighteousness. So we have to let them know that it is important that we live for the Lord and the Lord told us to put it away. To don't, you know, to do this, but hey, because some of us, you know, we get that licking and we did, we, we do some of the craziest thing. Go out there and kill somebody, because we out, we done got behind the wheel drunk, or, or we went out there. All these build up emotions and, and frustration that then came forth and you went, because that liquor that in you then made you go shoot somebody or go choke somebody, it, you know, people just begin to act ugly. We gotta let people know that, you know, it, yes, they say we celebrate the death, but there's a different way that we can celebrate. We, we, we don't have to celebrate it that way. We don't have to, to, you know, go out and get sloppy drunk and, and everything and but we got to live, we got to live this life, even our everyday life, instead of getting mad with, with so-and-so and decide you wants to do something to harm her or, or, you know, or do, do something to, to, to make them know that I didn't like what they said, you know. So we have to ma- make sure we let the people know that, that there's only one way that we gonna get to heaven, and that's like the Bible told us, if we live the righteous life, because the righteous shall not inherit the kingdom of heaven. Amen.
Amen. Before I get to Apostle Robin and other bud, just wanna cap on to what you said. Social media, I also want to just say, it's not just about the big problems in your life. This is when we say that from salvation, you are living because you wanna win the race and get to glorification, every area of your life, you have to keep God inclusive. Not just keep him inclusive in your health issues, not just keep him, you know, inclusive because you having a bad day, not and keep him only inclusive when your money funny. Not keep him inclusive when the kids and the dog and your wife or your husband acting crazy. Some of y'all got crazy thoughts and you don't even talk to the Lord about the thoughts that you have before you start saying stuff. Because just because you think your thoughts per se don't hurt, but it grows within and eventually it will. It's gonna hurt you and then it can come out and hurt others. You need to keep God inclusive. When you're walking this walk and it's not, and I've been hearing people saying, they thinking, when they look at us believers of Christ and Christians, they like, oh, you know, you gotta darn it be perfect. Uh, no, 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 no. But to hold up, this is the thing. You know you not perfect and God knows you not perfect, but don't sit there and take your imperfections as if, you know, you know, taking it cavalier like, oh, that's just how I am. You don't even respect God enough to change. See, that's the problem. See, some of y'all use the scapegoat. When y'all say to people, or you say to us leaders, don't judge you. When I hear that from people, that clearly lets me know that you don't wanna change in that area. You think you still, you want the, you want the crown, you still want the crown of life with you, with sin attached to you. No, 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 no. You're not gonna get it that way. Heavy is the head that carries the crown. Honey, I know, and that reflects in your life. Heavy is the head, meaning everything about, or your whole focus every morning is respecting and thanking God, because if it was not just for the littlest thing, her breath, that he puts, to see when you sleep, anything can happen to you. That's real talk. And then that gawk can have somebody break into your house, kill you and everybody up in there. See, y'all think about that. See, y'all think on the little things like that. See, y'all think on the big stuff like, oh, you buying all this stuff to protect your home and cars, but you don't think about when your body, your eyes, you in a deep sleep. Anything can come around you. If you got a wife, she, look, the devil can jump in her, she could turn over, take a knife and slit your throat. Anything can happen. I'm not saying this to scare anybody, social media, I'm scaring, I'm saying this for you to think on that level to break your mindset as well as your decision making. You don't have to make decisions on your own. You ain't even gotta think that hard. The word is real something. The word is real something. You wanna stop drinking, stop. The only thing is hard about those things that intoxicate and addict the body is the, is the choices you make and the people you arrange. Because you do it by choice, not by force. But if you really wanna stop, you can stop. Cuz you do it by choice, not by force, but if you really wanna stop, you can stop. Cuz God gave us that, God gave us the power, he gave us the freedom to choose. So now it's all about self-control, some of you, if you so weak when a temptation come, that's an error you got working. You don't have self-control over there. You wanna have self-control over the flesh and make your flesh be submissive to the spirit at all times, that's your job. But some of y'all just giving to what people say, you just, and you just let your life, you just be doing everything, let your flesh run amok. Amen, Apostle Robin, Elder Bud in that order?
Amen, I think Minister Isaiah had had his end up.
Oh, I'm sorry, if your hand went down, I heard Minister Isaiah, then Apostle Robin, um.
I, I just wanna backtrack on something a little bit, when we talk about death and funerals.
How would you, along with our question, how would you describe the way our culture thinks about and deals with death?
Okay, now, as people of faith, believer of God, we deal with death if we follow the law as our, our next step to glory. But what the mistake I see, I hear we make it here a little bit is too, we make it unbelievers think that there's no grace, there's no mourning period in there either, we, when we go there, when we go to church, it ain't always just about a celebration. Cuz remember, do God allow Dave to mourn for a little while, then he said, okay, how long are you gonna mourn? So I'm just saying for the unbelievers, I want them thinking that we don't go to a process of little mourning, but then we have to move on. That's probably just where we clear, cuz some people will look at it that way and think that what, well, somebody in my family die, I ain't supposed to mourn, I just supposed to, just to move on. But the, I just wanna know, there's a process where we do mourn, you know, even with our loved ones, there's a process, but then we move on. Cuz we got our faith in Christ and you know that person live by the law, you know they, they gonna, they know where they going, they gonna meet with Christ. He's gonna receive their glory, but there's still a process of mourning, you know? Forget the alcohol part of it, cuz that, you know that's full, you know what that feels.
That's a choice.
Yeah, that's a choice, but there is, but I don't want to distinguish people think that we, in death, even that person, you know they righteous with Christ, they're still, when you love someone and you know they good with God, you know they gonna be delivered, there's still a moment of mourning, you know? So I just wanna get that part clear, cuz some people think so, oh, they can't mourn cuz they believe in God, you know?
And also, we wanna say that social media with mourning, we're not saying that when you go through mourning, that you gotta drink. See, the world will, the world will send, will, will make it like, oh, it ain't, it ain't, it ain't nothing wrong with no drink, drink. So and so died. And so many words, that drinky drink might take you out, whether you a drinker or not. So it is like Minister Isaiah saying, and I told him, it's a process even with, because we're in this flesh. You, you're gonna, you're gonna miss the person, but at the same time, you should not be grieving to the point like the first day that they did die twenty years later, Houston, that's a problem. That's a real, that's a, that's a serious spiritual problem, and guess what, and the devil involved with it. Because if he had you at a place, when it comes to an individual that has been the, from their body, absent from their body for over twenty years? That's a devil problem, because he don't want you to ever be awakening to the, the real process of salvation, sanctification, justification, and glorification. Especially if the, if the person that has died is a child of God. He don't want you to tap into that information and to know that as you spiritually grow, it is a spiritual process even in mourning. He don't want you get over, because any little thing to keep you from really getting, getting the truth about the word of God, that's a win for him. That's a win, so some of you, you have to be honest about yourself even for those that we truly love. Because like Minister, when they gone, if you are a child of God, you gonna rejoice, I'm so glad they gone. For real, cuz they ain't gotta go, they ain't gotta worry about no chemo no more, going to no doctor, whipping and running all up down here, going, and it ain't even gotta be sickness. I'm just, oh, if they were, if they had just meant, you know, if they just had issues. Cuz some there, cuz there are unexpected events that happen to good people or those family members, they was at the wrong place at the wrong time. But if you wanna really look in their spirit, if you're looking at them by their spirit, if you are a child of God, rejoice. Cuz if they were right with God, oh, they got that crown. So it, it ain't really nothing to be, you, because it's, it is like a selfish thing, as you said Apostle, you, you keep on holding on. And you, you, you still mourning, like I said, like as if they died yesterday and they been gone for twenty years. We got pride, that's a serious problem, that's a, that is not of God, and that's, and trust me, the devil involved, cuz the devil don't want you to grow. Oh, he don't even, he don't even want your ear to hear anything that's gonna help you to grow spiritually. Because this is his playground, that's why it is the saying, heavy is the head. You want that crown, you better feel your, you better feel your spirit and it starts with here. With the power of, that's why the word is so powerful, it says, all you gotta do is speak and the devil will leave. But some of y'all don't speak, so that's why he know your head, your head is not heavy, meaning it's not grounded in the Lord. That's why he can play all in, that's why, and because of your decision making, that's how he know. Or I got him, yeah, they get in front of them, acting like they all beating heavy with the Lord. But behind scenes at home, ah, they don't do all that. I'ma make sure they don't get that crown, I'ma make sure that their head does not get solidly heavy when I can't take it off. Amen, Apostle Robin, Elder Bud, and then back to you Minister Rose.
Oh, wait a minute, hold up Apostle, Apostle, Apostle Tabo said, uh, when the scripture is alive or awakening in our hearts, it hits differently. Yes, it does, when a believer is laid to rest, absolutely, it is a sweet resting norm, absolutely, for those as a spiritual, we should know that. As a believer, our attitude must be a reflection of the word, absolutely, should be. There is a glorification first before a believer is laid to rest. Glorification is the seal of resurrection, amen, yes, but when you, um, the glorification first in a believer, once that spirit is absent from the body, that, that's when that process happens, but not in the body, if you think about it.
In the presence of the Lord, and if it's his, absolutely, you gonna get that crown. The word said that, we gonna, you gonna get that crown, amen, Apostle, Elder Bud and Minister Rose, back to you.
I guess, uh, I wanna take it back just a little bit about the death, and I was thinking about death, you know? Uh, like I said, a lot of times, you know, you gotta save people there, you gotta unsave people there. But I, I also feel that that's one of the greatest times is for us as the remnant to be witnesses. You know, cuz this is like, you know, because we, our light can shine then. You know, our light can shine more brighter then, because then they can see how we're responding to things, not saying that we're not gonna have tears, because we're human, we will, but we can also tell them tomorrow is not promised, you know, so much is going on now, you know? Way, way back when, you know, it used to be the older that were passing away. Now, death has no age number on it, it's just happening quickly, 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 and I keep hearing that in the spirit realm, things are happening quickly. So when we're going to these homegoing services and even if, if it's not a homegoing service where this person is not saved, you can say, you know, we can say to that person, hey, if you were to pass today, where would you go? Because, because a lot of times, you know, I've heard people say, they believe in heaven, but they don't believe in hell. Because they feel like, well, why would God want anyone to go to hell, well, God doesn't want anyone to go to hell. We send ourselves there because of the choices that we choose to make at the end of the day, so don't put that lie on God.
And, and reason why hell exists is cuz of the devil, so if you, so if you, if people, social media, if you be siding with the devil, that means you going with him, and he's going to hell. See, hell is not designed for us, but some of y'all choose him, so when you choose him, you going with him, that's an automatic, that's non-negotiable with the Lord.
And then I also wanted to add, you know, that's the, one of the best times where we can bring someone uh, into knowing Christ and say, you know, that's, it's, it's just as simple as asking God to come into your heart, believe that he will, confess your sins, you know, and, and God will just, he'll come on in and he'll save you. Is it gonna be, you know, all peaches and creams, no, we're not gonna say that, because we're still living on, in this crazy old world. But it was better than before, so we wanna make sure that you know without a shadow of a doubt, if you were to pass, even if you walk out that, that church building, uh, where would you go? That's the question, so.
But then also Apostle, some people assume, and I'm talking to the remnant, assume they going. And their heart is far from going, he ain't going nowhere, not yet, right now, God said I can say, he ain't coming nowhere. You're not coming nowhere, you're not gonna think you're gonna stand in the presence of him and think that you gonna expect a crown when he is, you were deliberately with the breath and the time that he gave you on earth. Doing what you wanna do and the world was doing, when you did nothing in his name to help anybody.
But that's why we repent daily and we ask God to forgive us our sins daily, not every other day, not weekly, not monthly, but every day.
Every second of the day, cuz your thoughts is a sin, some of y'all got some sinful thoughts, we just ain't heard them and we ain't seen them yet.
So, you know, so just had to share that, you know, I was just thinking. Even though, you know, and then I wanted to touch base on this, you know, because people were talking about alcohol, you know, and people that act crazy. I remember when my son passed in twenty seventeen, one of his friends, he took it so hard, you know? He just went into a drunken stupor and he lost his life, not, um, where he, he lost his life to the prison system because he went out and he end up killing someone and he got life in prison, in, in prison. So he lost his life because of the flesh, didn't know how to deal with the death. Just because somebody dies, that doesn't mean, you're, you're putting, you're putting a Band-Aid on it because you don't know how to deal with it. So really, you know, an altar call at every homegoing service should take place.
You, but you got that right, really, at a funeral, if you are a child of God, that's your opportunity to preach and teach. You should be, like I gave for an example, you should be showing your, you should be exercising your spiritual gift, that's your pulpit.
That is, that is right there in there, amen.
Whether you eulogizing or whether you part of the whole thing or not, you, your spirit should take over like, ooh, look at all these souls up in here. That probably don't know Jesus, probably only ten percent, that know of them, maybe two percent that's really spiritual striving to leave. Cuz the numbers getting low, y'all, numbers getting low, we already see that, with the actions that's even coming out of believers. The ones who have backslidden and some of them are choosing to backslide, that's even dangerous. They choosing, meaning they compromised, they done sold out. And then they're taking, they're taking their, the process for granted. They're taking salvation, they're taking sanctification, they're taking the whole process for granted.
They sure are.
That's scary right there, she rocks me every day, just that when man got talked about it and he showed me something. He said, there are those that are, they are intentionally backsliding. See, it's one thing you backslide because of maybe a temptation, okay, cuz this is God like, okay, cuz you was weak in that area, he can work with that. You know, cuz you can repent, cuz see, your heart will be sorrowful, but there are those of you in the remnant, you are intentionally selling out your integrity for God, you know, you know, forgot all about him, some of y'all been with him for twenty some years, some of you, he's allowed you to be leaders over a lot of people. And now, you done changed the dynamics and the protocol to fit your comfort, your comfortability in this time. Because you feel God moving too slow, you don't like the uncomfortability, you don't like the fact that your life in areas is affected. And you trying to hold on to stuff, but you ain't holding on to the spiritual stuff, cuz you're willing to give that up than to give up money or give up cars and houses. Jesus said it to the rich man, he said, what, the rich man said, what's it, sell all your stuff. When have any of you just up, and I'm talking to the rich fuck, let's, let's start at the top. When have you took that hugely perfect step like that and sold everything you got? Is you man or woman enough to do that for the Lord? I'ma let that, let, ooh, God, mm. Cuz some of y'all can't even, y'all won't even sacrifice in your mind to stop doing something, slow. That's why a big thing like that, it'll take you out. Some of y'all lose their mansions and cars and that money, and you gotta live on the street or under a bridge, or you gotta live paycheck to paycheck, it'll take you out of here. Elder Bud, Minister Rose?
Well, I'd say you took everything I wanted to say, that's why I put my hand down.
There's something, there's something we gotta really consider when you're dealing with the process and especially the importance of glorification. I know for a fact, and I'm putting it on record, I know I believe it for a fact, for those in the virtual classroom. Oh, we gonna get our crown, one way or the other, I, we gonna fight a devil all the way to the finish line. And we gonna fight the devil and the enemy in us, oh, we gonna get that beautiful crown. And we're gonna, and we gonna keep our head heavy and solid, it ain't gonna be that easy for the enemy to take it off. That's how I mean, nah, you wanna take my head, oh, nah, we just, oh, honey, I'ma give you a fight like, it's sixty-six books. And God told me the other day, cuz it's wartime, when I was in war, he said, the devil ain't, cuz, and, and so that's why I love how God will use stuff as parables for me, to pull me right back to scripture. One thing he used, a line from one of my, some of y'all may know, some of the, I'm a Rocky, I'm, I love all the Rockies. And God said, one line out of Rocky pulled me back to the scripture of Isaiah forty, forty-one, ten. So do not fear, for I am with you, do not be dismayed, for I am your God. I will strengthen you and help you, I will uphold you with my righteous right hand. The line that he said, when I was in, when the devil was trying, was attacking me and my family. He said he can't go fifteen rounds, the devil ain't built to go fifteen rounds, but you won't. Take him good, it's sixty-six books, take him down. He said, take him down, Teresa, I'm in you, it's sixty-six books, he's not built to go fifteen rounds.
Wow.
Rocky is anointed, he don't need, I don't even know if the man say, nah, he probably don't even know with the words and the scripts that he wrote. How powerful synonymous from the spirit realm, I mean, from the natural to the spirit realm, that that thing can take a devil head off. Some of y'all let the devil take over too easy, he hit y'all one time, y'all saying ding ding, I'm scared, I'm running out the ring. Let him have my family and stuff, you must be crazy, he can have the blessing, you really must be crazy. Anything God bless you with and the devil try to take it, uh-uh, just like he trying to take our glorification, Minister Rose?
That was good.
Elder Bud, you done?
Well, disagreeing with Pastor, I was really. Really powerful stuff there though, I'd like to make a comment on that. You know, when we get to a certain age, we, things, things slow down compared to what it was when we were younger. Uh, like I said, I worked twenty-four seven, never even thought about, you know, I quit going to church, quit, you know, worked all the overtime I could possibly do. Pay the bills, satisfied, everything's going great, all of a sudden, I start picking up alcohol and there it went. Right out the door, quit going to church, quit doing, quit having Bible studies with the kids and it just went to pot. You know, and I sit there and I look at my life and I'm by myself and I sit there and I think, you know, what opportunity more that I have to get into the word and study the word and seek the Lord than I ever have in my whole lifetime, and that, yes, accountability for that, you know? And I thank God for soldiers on fire for Christ, because Pastor keeps on, she keep telling me.
If I ain't going down there, I, I, nah, I can't, nah, no devils can't just roll up on me, I did, just I, I don't care. I don't care who you is, you got the devil in you, plus I'm from the dirty south of Baltimore. You just don't roll up. You cannot just roll up on a child of God. God said, don't you, don't you do it. Your mouth still work.
Praise God.
I just wanted to uh, to bring out a little bit uh, moral where um, Minister Isaiah was saying that we never uh, you know, want nobody to think that we don't mourn. Oh baby, I mourned when my mother passed away, but what I tell people all the time, we're yet human. And we're yet in this flesh suit. So when our loved ones do pass away, it's all right for you to cry. But like Pastor Teresa said, you ain't supposed to, you knowing the, the, the word of God and knowing, you know, that, that we appointed once to die. And after that, you know, just, if they're in Christ, you're not, you're not supposed to, you keep making yourself sick where you, and and where you lose focus on God. But I told somebody just this not too long ago. You supposed to mourn and once you mourn, it's supposed to get easier as the days go on. But yet you never gonna forget them and it's never gonna, you know, come a time that you gonna just that is easy. Yeah, you may have a thought, cause every now and then I think about my mom and miss my mom, but yet I don't, the get where it just overwhelms me or consume my whole day and we're not supposed to do that. You know, where we just, you know, lose focus on everything. Just push out even God out of our mind because we're mourning the death of somebody else. We can't do that. We can't do that, especially being Christians, you know, being, you know, believers, I like to say. Because everybody calling themselves Christians nowadays, but I just wanna say, we as believers in Christ, we can't, 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 can't let our lives just fall apart. Because somebody left here, left this world. But yet, it's, you gonna cry, but not continuously. You gotta yet, make it to the glory yourself. Cause if you, you know, you just let everything go to pot, where you think your salvation gonna go? Where you think your sanctification, your justification? All that's gonna go to pot. So, we have to remember that, yes, it's all right because we in this flesh suit, we gonna mourn, cause Jesus even whipped at Lazarus tomb, so we gotta remember, we, we can weep. Something wrong with you. You, and you ain't supposed to weep, and you telling the get away from you. Go far away from me, me, me as you possibly can, cause you a liar, cause Jesus whipped himself and you gonna tell me I can't weep? It ain't, it ain't possible.
Well, class, the time has escaped us. I ain't only, so that means the next time I teach social media, we'll be picking up where I left off. I thought I would get all of this done, but no, but God, Holy Spirit, he wanted us, I guess, to stay on this because to help those of you out there, when you are suffering from the loss of a loved one or if a loved one is in hospice and they're in the process of ready to, you know, leave up out of their body. You know, um, if you are a child of God, you have a responsibility, but also you have accountability and also you should know. And if you don't know what to say or what to do or what to pray, all you gotta do is ask the Holy Spirit. He'll speak through you. But first and foremost, you need to do a self-evaluation of how much you believe in God. Because even though the Bible says, yes, you only need the size of a mustard seed, but sometimes some of y'all will let your faith stay the size of a mustard seed after twenty years. That's unacceptable. And see, guess what? I'm gonna help y'all out. That's what the enemy want. Whatever you start off with, with God. Size of a tiny mustard seed, that's all he, that's all, with the only thing that you believe about God, that's all he wants you to take for the rest of your life. That's why, why do you think he don't have, he's not scared of going into a church organization or coming into your home? And you reading the Bible, he ain't afraid of no Bible, the word, he know the word better than us. He know Genesis, the Revelation. But he's a great deceiver. He just saying, if that's the only little bit you know about God, that's all you need to know. You don't need to know nothing else. You don't need to be doing nothing else. Just, just say that much, because the rest of your life, according to how many years God give you, the devil like, is mine's. You're not living for Christ, you, cause trust me, you will know, once you receive salvation. You will know, as if you, if you really believe, it's, it's the Holy Spirit in you. It's gonna push you to grow. But if you make up in your mind and in your life that you don't wanna grow, then you, then really, it's like you really have no stance against God when you're praying. God hears every prayer, but you, you have no footing when you enter into the presence of God to request anything. When here it is, he gave his son and he gave Christ, he gave the word. What have you given? See, God gave Christ and gave the word willingly. He did not say, okay, y'all, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let my son die for y'all. Let's, let's talk about this. Let's do a negotiation. I'm gonna let my son die for y'all if y'all just promise to have a relationship with me. He ain't say that. He ain't say that at all. He ain't say that at all. He didn't even, his, his actions wasn't even from Genesis. God so loved his creation, the world, that he gave his only begotten son. For whoever just believe in him, believe that he is true. And he is the son of God, who have eternal life. It's that easy. Ain't no strings attached, ain't no, no side deals, no hustles. No tic for tack. You know, no, no jumping over tables, throwing oil every place, no running down the street, manipulating people. Trying to get people to give up their money. Elder Bud, last words and then I'm gonna close this out in prayer.
Yeah, uh, can you hear me? Yeah, there was a lot said in this meeting tonight. I hope there, everybody that's been on here. And it's good to see Ruby on here. She's a friend of mine. Yeah, Ruby, yeah.
Social media, Elder Bud, always shouting out people. We love Ms. Ruby.
Praise God. But you know, the thing is, when we realize who he is and who he says he is. And we have the time to really study and, and show ourselves approved, because we will become more mightier, the word that it's in us. But the one thing is, all that's going on in the world, all the changes of, of body figures and all this kinda stuff and everything that's going on in the world. Every man will stand before God as he was from the beginning. He will stand before God and make an account of what he's done. I remember one thing that really touched my heart, way back when an airplane, it was eight hundred, the, the number was eight hundred, and it was on Life Magazine. And it was in the Life Magazine, it was Flight eight hun- eight hundred and the Everglades. And you saw body parts, you saw everything, you know, Life Magazine really put out pictures. And I saw that in that tree. And I sat there and just like all the people that are grounded in the water. You know, didn't he say that the, they go out the water, the bodies from the water and from everywhere? And they will all be put together as they were, as they were born, woman, man, whatever. And stand before God and make an account. So today is a day that I'm not any better than you. I'm, I'm a sinner saved by grace. Just like Billy Graham said, but the idea is I have a desire to know more about God because I know eternity. Because you get to a certain age and God gives it to you, that you will stand before God and make an account of everything that you've done on earth. So if you've got the born date and the dash and it's empty, you have plenty of time before that number becomes behind the dash on your tombstone. So make it today, change your life, follow after God. And we thank God for our group here on Soldiers on Fire for Christ. Great teaching, great ministry, and I'm glad I'm part of it. Amen.
That sound like a big uh, word. Hey, Elder Bud, I'll tell you, it's Anna. He is, social media, y'all get ready. That was a word. That was like a sermon. Amen. But again, thank y'all for joining me tonight. Hope, um, please come back. Uh, those that will read this recording later, God bless you if you share it. May the Spirit of the Lord bless and rest in your homes and those that are connected unto you. And um, please come back and join us and support us. All out, we just about spreading the gospel, help serving and praying for the Lord, but we love fellowshipping with those of like mind and believe in uh, God. We all believe in the one God, the Son, the Father, and the Holy Spirit, and we trust and believe in his word. His word is true. There's too many evidence around, even though it's a lot going on on the earth and the devil. Yeah, he let him have full ring. He's ruler of the earth. He letting him do what he wanna do fine, but he can't do. When it come to God's children, he can't do just what he wanna do. He can't. He can't just do what he wanna do with us. Now, with the people of the world and the sun, yeah, that's why some of y'all tore up from the floor. And, and it is our job to show that even though we have our issues, we ain't tore up from the floor. Cause we dealing with areas at a time with our life to be overcomers by the blood of the lamb. And by the word of his testimony, of our testimony and his, you know. But we, we not overcomers dealing with the devil. Nah, no fool with him. That's why he don't like us, because the word is too much and we, see, that's the part, he does not want you to believe. Every day he do not want you to believe why, with your eyes wide open. You can believe with your eyes closed, yup, cause you don't be knowing. Well, you know, if your eyes start to open up and your ears and your mind, see this right here, like I said. Like I said, cause he, he been cutting off some of y'all heads and y'all walking around headless and don't even know it. I'm talking about with the fulfillment and the knowledge and the wisdom of the Lord to navigate through this thing called life. That's why some of y'all so easy to get tempted in dumb areas. For real, I gotta call it God dumb.
That's good.
Easy to give, you know, we talk, we may talk about fornication, or you know, those are some, some sins, you know, named in there. But let's just take that one for example. Y'all so easy. How can you be so easy to fall for fornication with someone that you don't even know, don't even, you never, you haven't even checked their health? You know, you just risk that one night. And give you a disease for the rest of your life. You that easy. Get, you know, take that chance. See, that's where you need to understand, uh, you're reckless. You don't have no self-control, you don't have no self-discipline. I don't care how, I don't care what type of job you make out, what type of clothes, how good you look. But to God, you're reckless, you're immature. You can't even make sound decisions on a small thing. Just like with money, some of y'all just, every time you get money, y'all gotta spend. Some of y'all always on Amazon, y'all just be spinning up stuff. Especially y'all ladies out there. Oh, I need new weed. God, like you got five of them. I need new pair of shoes. You already got twenty in the closet. I wanna get some new curtains. You already got ten folded up in the car. Just switch, just switch, I'm getting another pair of curtains. Oh, I need a new coat. You got five, it ain't even winter time. There's five of them in there. But then all of a sudden, when a bill come, God, I need some money. Money sitting in the closet. Go sell them shoes you just got. Huh, it's brand new. Matter of fact, or give it away. You give it away, release it out your hand and I'll put more. See, some of y'all don't believe in that. I don't know why, when the word showed you, especially with Joe. Despite of what he went through, but Joe released it. Yeah, he mourned. His kids was gone, like Minister Rose said. But he never, he never let anything come between his relationship with God, no matter what was going on in his world. God said, you know what? He ain't even asked at that. He ain't begged God for nothing. God said, Joe felt like God gave it, God, God giveth, God take it away. But he never changed far as his relationship. And that's why God was so impressed. He said, you know what? Cause your actions, and I see myself in your heart, and you just love me like that? And you probably don't even realize how happy I am. I'm just gonna give you double for what you see. You got ten keys, I'm gonna give you twenty keys. You had this amount of money, I'm gonna give you double that. You ain't even asked for. See, that's how you can impress God and it's not about stuff. Because guess what? That's what God did. God loved us, that he gave his son. We asked for Christ to die. But some of y'all take his, you know, his, his death for granted. You don't, you don't even take it seriously, your life. Because of what you wake up in the morning and say indeed, playing the game. We don't have time. Amen. All hearts and minds are clear. Praise the Lord. Uh, come back, um, hold up, I had my thing. Come back and join us next, this week coming up, this Thursday, Apostle Robin Riley will be your prayer facilitator on the prayer call. Everything far as our prayer call panels discussion and Bible study, we normally have it at seven PM Eastern Standard Time, unless otherwise. Our panel discussions happen, the men happens at twelve noon on the third um, Saturday, the women have the fourth Saturday, and then every other month, we come together. The men and women have the compa- combined um, panel discussion normally happens between noon and twelve uh, PM Eastern Standard Time. The women, we have ours at one P, I mean, twelve and one. We have ours at one PM, the men have theirs at twelve, the combined is at twelve. So, uh, join us, we advertise, check out the group. Also, check out Soldiers on Fire for Christ webpage. We do have a website. W W W dot S O F F C Christ, I mean, W W W S O F F Christ dot com. Check out our webpage, Soldiers on Fire for Christ also have a YouTube page. You can check out all the previous Bible studies, panels, discussions, anything that you missed, because it is uploaded on Soldiers on Fire for Christ uh, YouTube page. All you gotta do, when you in a search, just put Soldiers on Fire for Christ. You will find it um, on YouTube and you can watch all the uh, previous uh, Bible studies and panels that you have missed. Please continue to keep us in prayer as we keep you in prayer, as God will be opening up other avenues of ministry so that we can be more effective in serving and reaching you from the comfort of your home. God making it real easy, no excuse. Don't let a button come between you and God. And also, please consider to partner with us here at Soldiers on Fire for Christ as we are in partnership with Saint Jude to raise a million dollars for the babies. Please go talk to God and help us to get this million dollars. It ain't for us, it's for the children. And we want cheerful givers. We want people that are excited just to, just the thought of wanting to help a child. Just a thought of wanting to help a child. So now, Saint Jude, the minimum that they accept is five dollars. Don't tell me you ain't got five dollars. God said, everybody on earth got five dollars. That what he say. You don't believe me? He said, everybody on earth can get five dollars. Even if you gotta get it from somebody. So it's no, it's, he said, and hey, God knows best, cause he everywhere. I'm not. I ain't, I can't come to your household, but he can. And he will tell me, he said, tell him, everybody, everybody can get five dollars. Somebody sitting on five dollars right now, ain't doing nothing with it. It's in your bank account, it's in your pocket, it's in your, your work wallet, whatever. You can put it on your card, you can get your credit card out, come to uh, Soldiers on Fire for Christ group. Minister Rose pay, it's a link. Look, look for the post, it's a link at the bottom, hit the link, fill out the form, your money goes straight to Saint Jude. You think I'm a liar? I challenge you to fill out the form and watch that email come to you. You ain't getting no email from us. Pastor ain't sending you nothing. We don't get none of your money. I have to stress that because some of y'all been y'all been financially raped over and over and over again. And certain organizations here at Soldiers, I'm gonna tell you straight up, cause I'm gonna treat you and me and my leaders gonna treat you like how we wanna be treated. I don't like nobody, you know, playing with me, lying to me, or scamming me, which I have been scammed before. I ain't gonna scam you, cause I know, I know the feeling, and especially when it come to finances. So, but here at Soldiers, we do have, we are commissioned by God. We are called by God to partner with them. And we're gonna make that million dollars. We haven't reached the goal yet, but God said we will. When we gonna do it? I don't know, but the pastor and me, I want it done now. Because all of us have spent a million dollars. Trust them, but you take, matter of fact, all of us have spent a million dollars within nine months. You tax about Trust them, but you take, my matter of fact, all of us have spent a million dollars within nine months, you tax about everything that you spend out every day for nine months, almost at a million dollars, food and everything, medical, everything, everything, amen. So, with that being said, again, come and join us, um, Apostle Robin Riley will be the prayer facilitator this Thursday coming up, uh, April, um, April tenth. Coming run, running up right behind her will be your Bible study instructor on the eleventh, Minister Isaiah, and then Saturday, Minister Rose on April four, April twelfth will be your Bible study instructor, so you gonna have two classes and one prayer. Um, facilitator, whole lot of word, no excuse that you ain't got no word, you ain't got no weapons to fight the devil in your life and the devil in you. Cause some of y'all got, some of y'all got areas that y'all need to work on and God is not pleased. And he, and you know the area, see, that's how it becomes the enemy in you, but you don't wanna do nothing about it, cause you wanna sit on it and be like, oh, that's just how I am. No, God is not accepting that no more either, he's not accepting that lie, oh, that is how I is, oh, but you don't wanna change? Okay, well, let me let the devil touch your life like he allowed him to do Job, and we gonna see what come out of you. Are you gonna, are you gonna run to God or you gonna try to handle it yourself, or you gonna go, or you gonna go negotiate with the devil so he can stop beating upon you and your family? Amen.
Wanted to say one comment about that, you know, you can get, uh, automatic, uh, 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 auto pay out of it, soldier, um, uh, um, help me out here, auto pay comes out automatically. For the Saint Jude, you can have auto pay, which comes out, you don't even see it, and it goes toward the purpose of what you're doing as well as praying, and it goes that direction and it is effective, I will say that.
Oh, amen, it sure is, so if you, um, partner with her, that's, that's, that's real easy too, because if you a certain amount every month, you will know that it comes off your card, cause you get the statement and you gonna get a nice little email from Saint Jude saying, thank you for your donation. You ain't getting enough from us, so also y'all can think about, yes, Saint Jude offers auto pay in reference to your donation. Amen, so all hearts and minds are clear, I'm gonna pray us out, thank you again, God bless each and every one of you prayerfully. You can join me the next time that I will teach and, um, it'll be announced. And I, I want you to have a wonderful, wonderful night, I want you to also continue to strengthen your relationship with the Lord. Some of you are, y'all say y'all strengthening, y'all ain't doing nothing, y'all ain't talking. Like God said, they ain't talking to me, soon as they get off of here, they don't be talking, they don't be including me, even watching TV, they don't even including me. They just going about their business, they only be like, come on, Lord, sit down and watch TV with me, he already see it anyway, he already see everything you do and he don't say nothing. Keep him included, I'm just having, I'd rather live with God than to live with the devil, real talk, amen. Oh, Heavenly Father, again, I thank you, Lord God, for every life on the virtual classroom, as well as those that will read this recording later. And Lord God, have your way in and through them as you have always done, even though we may be leaving the presence of each other on this platform, but we are spiritually connected and never leaving your sight, Lord God, I thank you for what you are doing behind the scenes and all of us. But again, Lord, I just competitioning you to forgive all of us for our sins, sins that are known and unknown, Lord God. And Lord, continue to help us and to open our eyes so we can see the wonderful things in your law, the wonderful things about you, but also turn our eyes from worthless things and preserve our life according to your word. Lord, turn our eyes from worthless people, the things that is not beneficial for our spiritual growth. Continue to help us in areas that we are weak so that we can be strong and, and you would be proud of us to have self-control and self-discipline, Lord God, so we can get strong integrity, so that we will be able to stand and represent you well in all that we say, think and do. So let this word sit and resonate within us to help us to continue to think about the process, our spiritual growth, salvation, sanctification, justification. But the most, the most important, that finish line, all of the areas are important, but we wanna get to glorification. We truly wanna finish well, but we need to continue to help and strive to understand the importance of each area. It's important, some people don't really know how important salvation is or sanctification or justification or glorification. Thank you for using us here at Soldiers on Fire for Christ, Apostle Robin, Minister Rose, Elder Bud and Minister Isaiah and myself, to use us and help us to speak and show what this process is all about and leading your people. Thank you for trusting us with the souls that you had given us, Lord God, and we do not take it lightly, because you know that we trust you and it's an honor that you trust us in the name of Jesus. And so as many of us are about to rest, have dinner, Lord God, continue to work in us and help us to continue to work and to remove anything, mind, body and spirit, that is not pleasing in your sight or people. Help us to disconnect from any relationships or friendships that is not pleasing in your sight, because if we lay down tonight and if you give us tomorrow, we wanna be better from the top of our head to the soul of our feet, from the inside out, we wanna be better than we was the day before. We want to make you proud, we wanna look like you, talk like you, move like you and speak like you, Lord God. We wanna be that lighthouse on the hill that is undeniable, when people see us, it's undeniable evidence that the Holy Spirit exists in us, and I decree and declare it over everyone under the sound of my voice and those that will do this recording later. Those that truly love you, their light will shine so brightly that it will irritate the enemy and the people that got the enemy in them like crazy. But most of them will bow down and they will say, what God do you serve? I wanna know him. And Lord, we praise and honor you in advance for those souls that you're gonna trust us with to win them and to send them right to you so that you can continue to, you know, strip them and, you know, do what you need to do so that they can continue to grow uprightly and not spiritually crooked. And so that they can be all what you created them to be and not what the world or people think that they should be. So continue to have your way in amongst us tonight, Lord God, heal us where we need to be healed, deliver us where we need to be delivered, set us free from wherever we need to be set free, Lord God, in and around our bodies, bless the works of our hands and our comings and goings, and we thank you for the angels you always send out every day to protect, defend and preserve your people. We praise and honor you for grace and mercy and love and faithfulness and forgiveness. And Lord, we're gonna continue to strive to have grace and mercy and love and faithfulness for one another. We praise and give you all the glory and honor that you so rightly deserve for it now, again, thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you for still loving us tonight, thank you for still trusting us tonight. Thank you for never leaving us nor forsaking us, in Jesus' name, we love you and we praise you, and we all say, amen.
Amen.